Recording in progress.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. Tonight, we're going to at the City Council Study Session, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, five thirty. Hannah, would you please give us a roll call?
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Excuse?
Councilmember Amor.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
She should be on.
Yeah, she's not on yet. Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here. Public participation, the city, the Auburn City Council Studies Session Meeting scheduled for Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, at five thirty P. M., will be held in person and virtually. Is there any agenda modifications?
No, Chair.
Announcements, reports, and presentations?
No, Chair.
I will turn over the community wellness discussion time to Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you. Every two years, our Human Services Committee and staff begin the grant application process with the goal of identifying organizations that have the greatest impact in our city. I know our committee worked very hard to review applications and performance and impact as they went through all of the applications, and so at this time, we have Kent and Jody from Human Services, who are going to give us an update on the applications. I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that. I'm telling you, I'm not doing that.
It's okay. It'll just stay.
Yeah, but it's not full screen. It's not full screen.
Is there a way to get the PowerPoint loaded into that file?
No, I think it's, it should be there.
Yeah, there should be a PowerPoint. Because I need PowerPoint. I'm not sure where. Can you click here? Maybe. There we go.
All right, sorry about that. All right, there we go. All right, hello, my name's Kent Haye, I'm the Human Services Director. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, interim Deputy Mayor. So, real quick, I am going to go over, kind of just briefly over the application cycle, kind of explain to you how the whole funding cycle works, and then talk to you about the Human Services Committee and how we got to who they chose to fund for this two-year cycle. So, the Human Services Fund is six hundred and eighty thousand annually. The budget line item approved by the City Council every year, sorry, every other year during the budget process. The priorities are set by, were set by City Council in two thousand nineteen, and the review of the two thousand nineteen Community and Leeds Assessment, which is part of our consolidated plan, that kind of guides our funding process for Human Services Committee to decide on the contracts. So, during the cycle, when it happens, it goes from March to April first is when the application cycle opens. There is a program called Share One App. It's sixteen cities. It's an app that Redmond oversees. All the people applying for Human Services Grants upload their applications into this portal, and they can apply to multiple cities for funding. During that process, there are some outreach that goes on from the city. We provide, we provided four sessions this turnaround with two priority meetings, and then the second two were for assistance with the applications itself. And then also, we held, we took part in the King County, South King County Forum on Homelessness to Answer Questions. That was provided in the city of Kent. So, the application review timeline, so saying from March to April, there's an application that is open. Everybody submits their applications. From May to August, that's when the applications go to Human Services Committee for scoring using our Rubix. And they are reviewed by Human Services Committee in August. We go over the scoring, and then the final decision is made from the Human Services Committee on who they're going to fund. And then October, now, we're presenting those agencies to City Council. So, the Human Services Funding Priorities for twenty five and twenty six. There used to be four, so it was homelessness intervention, housing stability, basic needs, job training and education. We combined those to make two priority areas, homelessness and housing stability, which is seventy-five percent, and basic needs, job training and education, which is the remaining twenty-five percent. In two thousand, for the two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six application cycle, we received ninety-seven applications, one point eight million in homeless and housing stability requested, two point three million in basic needs, job training and education requested, for a total of four point two million requested in funds for these applications. The way that we went through, going through the applications to present to our committee, is we followed the different cities method. So, we split the applications into three tiers. Tier three was applications that were received that were incomplete and requested less than ten thousand. So, we set our baseline at ten thousand and up. So, if you didn't ask for, if you asked for less than ten thousand, your application was incomplete. Tier two was completed applications, but the program goals didn't meet the primary goals for the city of Auburn. And then tier one was completed applications with the program goals that met the city's priorities, and the programs focused on the city of Auburn residents. So, the tier three applications were submitted to our committee members. They used the needs assessment from the Consolidated Plan, which is from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, to kind of guide their, their scoring. Again, using also the priority, the priority areas for consideration. And the key considerations were prioritizing programs that serve high numbers of Auburn residents, cost per unit inclusive of BIPOC representation, program status without funding. So, what that means is, can their agency, is their agency just fully running on just funding from Auburn? And does it, is it, can it maintain without funding from Auburn, right? And then also looking at if we can fully fund requests from an agency, their past performance, and then also fully funding programs that focus on benefiting Auburn residents. So, the funding decisions, in the, in the tier three, so after all that.
Tier one, sorry.
I'm sorry. In the, in the tier ones, when committee went, the one the committee went through, they scored, and they went through the top twelve. So, the top twelve that made the highest numbers were the ones that we focused on. And those are the, the ones that we, that the Human Services Committee decided to fund. So, in this phase, one of the conversations we have with our Human Services Committee is, do we peanut butter spread and, and fund a whole bunch of agencies with smaller dollars and not get really any benefit out of it? Or do we fund less agencies with bigger dollars so that we can hold those agencies accountable, and then also make sure that they're focusing on the Auburn residents and providing the assistance that we need here? So, in total, we have twenty-four applications, twelve in homelessness and housing stability, and twelve in basic needs, job training and education. And these are the, and those are the two slides that you see there are the agencies that are being funded by the Human Serv, through the Human Services Committee, its decision. Any questions?
Councilman, questions? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you, Kent, for all that. I just had a question on your ninety-seven applicants. Is that an increase from last year?
I believe it is an increase, yeah, it's an increase from last year. What happened the, the two years prior is the city got ARPA funds. And so, they added five hundred thousand dollars to the Human Services Funding, which is one point one million. So, they were able to provide more funding to a lot of agencies. So, what happened, I think this funding cycle was, a lot of agencies don't understand that we don't have that money any longer. And so, we went back to our six eighty. So, we got more applications, but also asking for bigger dollars. That's why you got the four point one million.
Thank you.
So, out of the twelve, this is the amount that they each received. You started with ten thousand down to a hundred thousand.
So, in housing, homelessness and housing stability, yes, you'll see the funded amount, so the requested amount. And then what the, the Human Services Committee funded those agencies at.
So, so the requested amount was what each one of them.
Asked for. Yes.
So, we gave them about half of it.
Some of them.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Thank you. Now, we're gonna, yeah, yeah, now we transition to the CBD, C, how do I say this wrong? CBD Initial Public Comment Presentation. We created a new colla, consolidated plan, there's a new consolidated plan created every five years. The last plan began in twenty nineteen and expires at the end of this year. This plan shapes how we make investments in our community. While the city invests millions of dollars in this plan focuses on six hundred and eighty thousand of federal funds that the city receives. So, at this time, Jody.
Thank you, so I'm Jody Davidson, I'm the Human Services slash CDBG Coordinator, working with Kent on the Consolidated Plan. So, I'd like to just bring just a quick overview to you. We were here in June and went over the Consolidated Plan. As Councilmember Taylor mentioned, it's a five-year plan, that it, it does guide the city's spending of these federal dollars. The, so the Consolidated Plan spans this time period, but there's cadence in other reports that are submitted to HUD on our performance. In addition to submitting the Consolidated Plan, we will have a twenty twenty-five action plan. And then, in a few months later, we will submit a CAPR that covers our performance in twenty twenty-four. And then that cycle continues throughout the five-year span. And so, just to recap very quickly on this particular program, the city anticipates receiving, so we will, we will receive six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. It was actually deposited in September. It's the twenty twenty-four CDBG spending funds, it carries us into twenty twenty-five. It's an entitlement program that's designed to target the, the needs of our communities and our most vulnerable populations. It does target low to moderate income individuals. There are some programs that target disabled individuals, elderly, or, and/or homeless individuals within our city. So, in, on June twenty-fourth, when we were here, was here with Jeff Tate. One of the things that we asked you were, before we kind of dove into the meat of it, what were your initial comments about how you thought the funding should be spent? And here's just a summary of the, the comments that I was able to capture from that discussion when we were here. I'll give you just a second, I'm sure you've reviewed this material ahead of time, but just so you remember what you, what you thought was your focus. After June, we, we have contracted with Cloud Burst Consulting Group. They are the organization that we used a few years ago in twenty nineteen, when we created the Consolidated Plan. Cloud Burst's specific job is to gather data from the sources that we listed on the screen. They're conducting our needs assessment, market analysis, they identify barriers in our community. They will finalize their report to us on October thirty-first, so I don't have that data to present to you tonight. But that information will feed directly into our Consolidated Plan. One of the requirements of HUD is that we have a specific list of stakeholders that we have to reach out to. So, our initial engagement period was from July twenty-fifth to August twenty-third. During that time period, we identified who the stakeholder list was. In addition to a designated list from HUD, we also identified specific communities. In, in casting a wide net, there were some, some demographics that we specifically wanted to hear from. Among that demographic were our homeless population. And so, we devised a method to reach out to them, as well as our senior citizens. And, and I'm going to go into how we gathered this data. So, the methods that we use to reach out were digital, in-person, public engagement, and we had a few of those. What we wanted from these individuals were to find out their, their initial ideas and priorities on how we should spend the money. Let's see. Go to our next one. So, our engagement opportunities included the list on the screen. We had Speak Up Auburn, our website, we had two public gatherings, we had our National Night Out. We were outside with everyone else. We also had a luncheon out there, then we canvassed the city. The, our flyers and information on our survey with our QR code were put up in strategic areas in the city. We hit Lakeland Hills, we made sure that we hit North and South Auburn. I went out to Muckleshoot and put some things out at their tribal health organization, the YMCA, trying to do our best to reach all demographics in our city. Our print material, as you can see, was printed in five, six different languages in our website, automatically translates into two hundred different languages. So, we ensured the city was canvassed and provided enough information at Speak Up Auburn, hopefully for easy conception, not very complicated information about this particular program. We wanted people to be able to easily digest the information that we were providing. Our next slide, our survey was designed to be used on the phone. It was eas, it was easy to fill out. I hope you saw the opportunity and you engaged in that survey. One of the things that we did in the survey is we, we wanted to make sure that it was short. Long surveys don't gather a lot of participation, so it was intentionally short. We did receive a hundred and twenty responses to our survey. We did have six hundred and thirty-two visitors at Speak Up Auburn and five hundred and four engaged with the page. That means a click or a scroll, that's what those engagement points are. We are confident that through all of our channels, we reached at least ten thousand people in gathering this information. The, our survey questions asked some, so HUD designate spending categories. Those are the five categories in the column on the left, affordable housing, basic needs, economic development, preventing homelessness, and property enhancements. We asked our individuals to rank those in order of priority. What we wanted to learn was, what does the public think we should be doing with this money? Where are these people from, our stakeholders? Do they live, work in Auburn, or are they a service provider and provide services and needs within our city? We also wanted to know, are they giving services within our city, or are they receiving services within our city? And so, this is, this is the ranking. I wanted to highlight a few of these to you, just in case. Basic needs came in highest, and basic needs involve things like, hold on one second, let me just get my list. It's kind of lanky. Other activities like grants to small businesses that employ people from low to moderate income households, emergency situations, business grants, neighborhood cleanup, emergency rent assistance. And then, and then, basic needs, food, shelter, commodities. The next category were public facilities and improvements. Those things are like the sidewalk projects that we've done, recreational facilities, our library. The next one was housing, it was specifically focused at housing, and that's low-income housing, senior housing, access to housing. Our third one was preventing homelessness, and then our last one was economic development activities. So, just to reiterate some of these, other activities, interim assistance, loss of rental income, garbage trash removal, neighborhood cleanup programs, family relocation assistance, or grants to businesses that employ individuals from low to moderate income families, public facilities, childcare, crime prevention, substance abuse, and services for homeless and senior citizens. The housing category was home and repair, rehabilitation, energy efficient improvements, handicap accessibility improvements for low or moderate income families, homeownership, down payment programs, financial counseling, or home purchasing activities. The other real property activity, which we categorize as preventing homelessness, also involves removal of lead-based paint, energy efficiency, acquisition of property to convert it into low-income housing or shelters, disposition of real property, and then removal of slum or blight, also includes code enforcement. And then economic development activities is micro enterprise assistance, small business loans, public facility improvements. The next category that we asked is, where do you work and reside? You can see that the, the highest three categories are Auburn. We also had some individuals from Tacoma, Sumner, Seattle, Spanaway. And then, who we heard from, were you receiving, providing, or neither? I was really happy to see that more than fifty percent of the participants were individuals that were receiving services in our city. That is the lowest income group that we have that live here. And then our service providers engaged, I was happy to see that as well. So, the last question in our survey were open-ended. We basically just gave people an opportunity to just tell us whatever they wanted to hear. After I pulled all of those comments, we scrubbed them for, for specific themes, and these are the four things that came up. And these are not ranked in any order of priority, but their public safety, downtown development, community engagement, housing and homelessness, childcare and early education were among the top themes in all of those written comments. And so, let me just, sorry, flip to my notes here, I apologize. So, public safety and infrastructure, some of the subthemes were sidewalks, corridors, street beautification, park upgrades, neighborhood cleanups. Downtown and development included things like downtown revitalization, youth centers, local businesses, local arts, and entertainment options. Home, housing and homelessness included addressing families on fixed income, transitional housing, access to ID cards, shelters, low-income senior housing, clean and sober housing, disabled support, affordable housing focus, senior housing, addressing rental costs, and home improvement assistance. Childcare and early education included things like affordable childcare, childcare provider support, or childcare worker training. And then our general concerns and feedback were city services, leadership management, taxation, and fund allocation. So, when we take the data, unfortunately, that we haven't shared with you yet because it's not finalized, but from Cloud Burst, I wish I could share with that tonight, but I fed a little bit of that into this. So, when we look at, when we look at that, and all of that data comes together, there's one theme that emerged over all the others. Although our community provided a lot of feedback in a lot of different areas, there's one comment, and it's housing. Housing in a multi-promed approach. So, it's not just low-income housing or access to housing, it's housing for seniors, housing for disabled. So, again, I want to bring you back to the comments that you made back on June twenty-fourth. And I went into your comments and I highlighted the things that you spoke of that pointed directly to some kind of housing. So, Councilmember Rakes, you said senior mobile home parks. Councilmember Amor, it was help for senior citizens. Councilmember Baldwin, housing affordability, property rehab. Councilmember Taylor, homeownership assistance. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, it was decisions for long-term, or sorry, that was Kathy, I apologize, Kathy Taylor, that's you. And then Councilmember Trout Manuel, barriers to housing, home repairs, and homeowner, homeownership. And so, Tracy, I'm sorry, I just. My mouth is sore, I'm a little nervous, you guys are so intimidating tonight. So, our next step, so you can see where we're at, we're in the October twenty-fourth to February fifth. Our Consolidated Plan will be drafted by the middle of November. It will go out for public comment before we bring it back to you, so that you can see what our public has to say about the actual document. We will bring, come back to you again in March with a draft of that plan. And then, I wanted to actually just point this out to you in case it comes up for a question. Unfortunately, HUD regulations make us provide our Consolidated Plan and our annual action plan together, the first year of the Consolidated Plan. It does make room for us to, there's an assumption that we know exactly what needs to go in that annual action plan, without the opportunity to specifically bring it to you for your feedback. So, when we come back to you in March, this only happens the first year of every Consolidated Plan, we will actually have an annual action plan. We will bring it to you in a, in a study session, we will tell you what we think, the specific spending actions need to be of this money, ask for your feedback before we come back to you with both of those documents for ratification. So, the following year, we will bring the action plan to you separately, by itself, and do the same thing. But unfortunately, these documents have to go to HUD simultaneously. So, I apologize in advance, you will get an action plan that has some assumptions of spending before you have an opportunity to tell us what those, you believe those spendings should be like. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out to you, it's a cycle that we kind of can't get around. And, yes, questions?
Yes. When I was listening, I had a question, I was like, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I always hear childcare, childcare, the cost. And I never hear, what is the cost for cha, the childcare? From low to high, you know, because I always hear people complaining about the cost of childcare. What is the cost of childcare?
I am happy to research that for you and provide it to you. I could speak from personal experience and friends that have children and childcare, and I'm hearing eight hundred dollars per child or more per month.
Depending the location.
And the age of the child. Infants are definitely more than older children, but I'm more than happy to get that data if you'd like.
Okay, yes, because I know my children, when they had their children in daycare, they were paying about thirty-five hundred dollars a month. So, I was just kind of curious.
I wish I had that for you, but I will get it for you.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Any other questions?
Councilmember Ricks?
Thanks, and I'm not sure you can answer this tonight, but I do have a question about the housing repair program. What stand, are we using HUD standards as far as the income?
Yes, we are, yes. Those were updated, those were updated in late twenty twenty-three, and they were implemented January one, twenty twenty-four. So, yes, we are. If they fall above that income threshold, they are denied.
Yeah, do you happen to know what that is now?
I don't, off the top of my head, but I can find that out for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I had a question. So, the last part of your presentation, you mentioned having to submit your plan to HUD, and then bring that to us for review. So, how does, what does that look like? Are there modifications that you would have to make to the one you submitted to HUD, or is that kind of a?
So, the, the final submission to HUD, I apologize, I didn't clarify this. The final submission to them is after you've seen the finalized document. So, it will be late March when we actually submit that to HUD officially. With our official submission. That plan, when we, we draft the document, we send it out for public comment for thirty days. And then, after I have incorporated public comment, we bring that to you for review. And then, following that, we take it, we also, after you ratify it at a council meeting, we then take that approved plan to Bellevue, Kent, Federal Way, and King County. It becomes part of their consortium plan.
Got it.
Then it's submitted to HUD, uh, as a finalized document. I apologize, I didn't make that very clear.
Councilmember Taylor?
So to follow up from what, uh, Councilmember Clinton Taylor had said. So when you bring it back to us, then if we make recommendations moving forward, then you would incorporate those with the public comment and then send it off? Or is this the final end-all, be-all, we take care of it in March and then move it forward?
Here's the, here's the interesting thing about, about the, the decisions that the city makes. That, so the Consolidated Plan doesn't have specific spending guidelines in it. What it does is it addresses the overall overarching needs in our city. The Annual Action Plan is the one that has the very specific, we're going to spend X number of dollars in this way. That's the document that I just spoke of that doesn't allow us, because it's the first cycle of this plan, it doesn't allow us to bring it to you, uh, separate from the Consolidated Plan. Uh, unfortunately, as staff, we have to look at the data and make some assumptions of spending. And then the document is brought to you because of the time period involved. It's a thirty-day comment period, and unfortunately, we don't have the window for two thirty-day comment periods for both of these documents, so they have to go out together. But we, after comment, we will incorporate your suggestions. This council does finalize the Annual Action Plan with a specific spending in it before it goes to council. The, the guiding data, though, is public comment. HUD makes that very, very clear. It is, it is public comment. We do have latitude to choose how the money is spent, but that choice has to be supported by the data from public. So as long as we are falling within the identified areas in our Consolidated Plan and public comment in our Action Plan, we do have the latitude to choose how that is spent, just as long as the data supports it. Does that make sense? Okay.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will take over agenda items for council discussion. Downtown Auburn Discussion Parks. Uh, Director,
It's the three studios.
Oh, okay. I'll let you introduce your three staff.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Exciting evening for Auburn. We've been wanting to roll this out for a while and had to keep it in confidence for quite a few reasons. But last Monday's acquisition of the one-twenty-five site, um, makes this the perfect evening to roll this out. I'm Daryl Faber, Director of Park Stars and Recreation. Matt Larson's going to be the project manager on the construction of these three sites we're working on. And Julie Kruger, she's the, um, brains behind, behind its success after we get it open, as well as with a lot of the design elements that are in there from the Arts and Events End. So I'm going to kick it off and then turn it over to, to Matt, um, in a second. But, um, just a few comments on this. The council, and many electeds before you have been in many visioning dreams, hopes and dreams retreats over the years. And a vibrant downtown, um, where community gathers, that came up in the last presentation as well, that encourages pedestrian circulation, um, arts and the energy and economic growth downtown, I think has always been a highlight of our city for, for what we really want to see in our downtown. So this is an exciting time. What I found at my desk quite funny was in thirty, well, I'll do it in, we're, we're, four mayors and thirty-four years ago, our forefathers brought upon this downtown plan. And in the plan, on the centerfold, is a downtown park circulated with the arts. With, in fact, I'll, I'll read what they stayed in here, it's really exciting. The plan spoke to green space, artwork, art, outdoor sales, performing stage. And I said if food trucks were around in nineteen ninety, they would have spoke about food trucks too. So in thirty-four years, I think in two years, we're going to have something not like this, but similar to it in our downtown that's really going to, um, revitalize things. Like it was envisioned, the names in here are Lynn Norman and Mayor Regner, and, um, just a crazy group of Sue Singer. It's, it's just Rich Wagner, Stacy Brother, so people that sat in your chairs went somewhere, and this is what came out. And now we're going to really get a chance to realize it. So I'm going to turn this over to Matt Larson, who's going to speak about the first part, which is infrastructure improvements. A lot of things that happen under the ground are going to need to be successful for our above-ground. And, um, we all know that since COVID especially, the above-ground stuff of outdoor entertainment has really changed. And, um, he's going to kind of draw into what's happening with these downtown projects.
Yeah, so thank you, appreciate your time. So, see on the screen, this is our, our downtown infrastructure improvement project. Kind of think of it as sort of Phase Two of the downtown revitalization. Phase One was, is going on right now with the demolition of the existing theater. And so this would be tech, basically Phase Two. Phase Two basically is, um, New Street, uh, New Street on Main Street. Uh, includes a, uh, downtown decorative, um, traffic signal, new traffic signal at Auburn Avenue and Main Street. It's, uh, downtown decorative, um, streetlight poles along the, uh, uh, Main Street. With the added of this, um, um, cantenary lighting system. You can see the, the, the picture in the top left of the screen is a, is an example of, of what that might look like. And then, uh, that actually can, 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 the area lighting system will continue into the B Street Plaza area as well. Um, the stuff that's not so visual that we're doing, uh, there's quite a bit of underground utility infrastructure improvements. The, the, the infrastructure, as you might expect, on Main Street is very old, um, needs to be upgraded, uh, upsized as well. So new water main, um, storm drainage improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, the stuff that nobody really likes to think about except for, you know, engineers, get really excited about that stuff. Uh, and then, uh, and then also, uh, upgrades, uh, our B Street Plaza area. So if you've been down over by between, you know, Safeway and, and Main Street, um, it's, you know, kind of tired. It was, it was nice when it was originally built, and it's, it's gotten tired over the years. And so, um, you know, improving that space, um, and you can see on the next, yeah, the next page. This is a visualization, very conceptual. Um, this would be looking at it, uh, to the north, so from sort of midway between the plaza, uh, looking north towards, in the background, you can see, uh, the Postmark, um, Center for the Arts. Uh, and so this is just a visual, visualization of what that might look like. You can see the, the downtown, uh, standard or decorative lighting, uh, with that, like I said, the cantary lighting system across, and lots of places to, to sit and, um, and enjoy the, the area. So, schedule-wise and budget, so obviously the planning and scoping is complete. Uh, we are working through the detailed design of this project. Uh, we're about midway through the design phase. Uh, we're looking at starting construction in January or February of, of this next year. So it'll be heavy in construction next year. Hopefully, hoping to finish, um, you know, in a twelve-month period. Uh, keep in mind that the heavy construction is going to take several months. And then there's a lot of, um, uh, materials that just take time to procure, specifically those decorative lighting, they just, they take a little bit longer. So a lot of the infrastructure's going to be in place, and then we'll just be waiting for some of that lighting stuff to, to actually be delivered. Funding sources, uh, you can see on the screen, Artial Street Fund, REIT, uh, Local Revit, Revitalization Fund, some ARPA money, uh, was mentioned previously, and then, uh, a King County Grant. And the King County Grant was specifically for a, uh, the preliminary design, schematic design of the theater. It kind of looped into this because we really wanted to get an idea of, of what we were going to put in for the theater, get a conceptual design of the theater itself, um, just, just to make sure that it all sort of, um, you know, molds together nicely. So we had included that as part of this project as well.
And then, I'll, yeah, a little, the theater, we'll, we'll go into that, but I think what Matt ended with there is super important. This is really an interdisciplinary project from our Public Works Department, IT, Police. Every, every division in the city really is involved in this, and we get the privilege of operating it when it's done. But I am so confident with the coworkers in this room that we're going, we're going to pull this thing off seamlessly. And, um, in two summers from now, we're going to be out there listening to Hells Bells, having a cold beer or something. But, um, a little bit of the background on the theater, it's, it's, it's crazy. Ninety-eight years ago, it was built and it served the community well as a bus depot, uh, um, uh, movie theater, a dinner theater, performing arts theater. Obviously, then the fire happened, um, a couple of years ago. But the city's main, we operated for the last fifteen years and just owned it like the last five of that, which was able to give us now the opportunity to, to build a new, a new site there. And we were operating like eighty to a hundred shows every year, and that brought about fifteen thousand people to our downtown. And when you think about fifteen thousand people in the downtown, the state's classification, well, that's created about a, a half a million dollars in revenues, as you spend that money over and over, and that's been lost in our downtown. And, um, I think it's really important that we bring that back, and not only from a revenue standpoint, but just from a relationship standpoint. We have so many people that have been involved, um, teens and kids in our programs. And the energy never really went away after it closed, but it just feels different now. And, um, Auburn has just stayed so supportive of the performing arts. So we're really excited about this, um, new adventure. And most of the patrons, as you can see from that map there, you know, about forty-five percent are coming from like five miles away. So it's a local theater, but people also of the last couple of years especially were coming here because of price point, free parking. They might have had a restaurant they liked in Auburn, so it's becoming a bit more of a regional draw because there's just not a lot of, um, community theaters around that we're doing, we are, what we're doing, um, with the breadth of our shows. So, um, yeah, the fire came, this is really appropriate with this week. Unfortunately, our building was severely damaged, um, the Max House, Nelson's Jeweler all had to be, you know, were a part of the fire. And then last week, we began demolition. Um, it went out on, with a bang on Friday, with a power outage because of a transformer. Uh, so the theater really did, did, um, end up going out. But we're, um, under demolition right now, and there's one wall, a shared wall that's, um, holding up the Comic Store building, until we take that over probably in January or February after we do our due diligence, um, with that project. So this whole time, um, the, at the council retreat, many of you spoke about, um, a downtown improvement district. You spoke, spoke about making downtown alive in the arts and revitalizing it. And, um, not only did you say that, we had so many letters of community support as we wrote grant for this, grants for this project, from the downtown theater audiences, the downtown cooperative, the school district, former performers who worked there. Everybody loved the AV, and Jim Kleinbeck's in the back there, and he's, he, he was the heart of this AV as well as from an employee thing. He was there on like twenty-plus years, from cleaning bathrooms to performing, he did it all and has kept this rolling. And, um, I don't think we can ever understate the value of kids being involved in theater, and how it just kind of shapes their lives and gives them confidence. So I'm so looking forward to that coming back. Same time as the fire happened, obviously, there was a lot of growth in our downtown, probably fifteen hundred new residents in four buildings without a lot of places to go. And so we've heard from them as well as we've surveyed the community, that a lot of them are just looking for walkable, safe downtown. And way back to this original plan, one of the things that's mentioned is as people come to downtown, there's more security. That hasn't changed. We thought this was like the safe time in America in the nineties. They mentioned the same things that we're mentioning now, you want people somewhere so you feel safe. And so that hasn't changed much as well. So these new developments, especially Divine Court across the street, that's eighty-eight units, a lot of them are Green River College students in there. Um, they're looking for a place to go to gather and to be entertained. Our Postmark Center came on the, on the scene last year, thanks to some forward-thinking of the council and city as well, on getting that award-winning facility. So there's a lot of energy downtown, and this is going to be the capper, this will be our dessert. So this is, um, really, you're talking base, what's this called? Shadow?
Yeah, Shadow.
Yeah, so this is taken basically if you were sitting on top of the, um, the Trek building. So you're looking northeast a little bit, it'll be on the corner of Main and Auburn AV. And so Postmark far to your left, that ugly funny thing, that's that maple tree. And this also shows when the, um, when the Comic Store's still shaded in this design. So it's going to face Main Street and Auburn AV, it doesn't have a name yet. But it'll basically be about a, a one and a half story on the bottom, and then where the theater, where the house is, that's the race portion. That'll be about a three to four story, about forty feet, thirty-six feet. So, um, yes, and it's, um, about twenty-five percent larger than the former theater. It was about seventy-five hundred feet, it's going to be about ten thousand feet, and seat about twenty-five percent more audience. Um, the thing that's really going to gain is the last one was not built originally to be a theater. This is going to be a space that we can be really proud of and run the whole gambit of shows that we produce. Quality restrooms, backstage, comfortable seating, the right rake for performers and audience. And, um, a place where even employees, when we do all-staff meetings, two hundred and eighty of us could meet at one time in one place and, um, have all-staff activities. It's so close to downtown, close to downtown, parking garages that are being built. So it's just a great location. So you can kind of see how the house goes, um, of the, one on the right there, you can see how the house rakes underground a little bit. There's obviously some underground water issues in this town, so we can't go down very deep. But it does help us with the height of our building and adding some scale to it. Also keeps the building on that corner, not just being another one of the huge, large buildings that we have in downtown. And the lower we keep it, the better the sunlight will be on the Future Plaza, which will be located east of this. So behind the house, it'll, um, we'll be able to load our stage from the alleyway, from the Postmark, which is really convenient. Um, you're not blocking traffic on a main thing when a band or a production has to roll in. Um, it's got a relatively small lobby area, um, adequate bathrooms, I was, it, ten or whatever for the size of audience we have versus what we have now. Small concession area, um, green room, all the things that you'd want in a more modern theater. Yet a small enough house with tight seating that you won't feel like you're lost in the crowd if you, as if you were at the Paramount on the Fifth Avenue. You're talking about, you know, three hundred seats, not two thousand. Perfect for what we do. Our timeline, uh, we're under demolition. It's going really, really well. We'll do a second demolition in about three or four months. And we're in the middle of preliminary design right now, um, finalizing that. We've had a great team from OTAC and their subs, as well as many people on the city, to go over this design with many fine-toothed combs. And so that's been really exciting because you're dealing with two things. Square footage costs money, you'd like it bigger, but you don't have more money. So how do you do everything you want? That's kind of like a kid's dream model, right? You'd really like that, but you can only afford that, but blah, blah, blah. So we have put together an amazing package, thanks to our finance department, grant writers like Julie, um, and others, where it's about a twelve-million-dollar project, um, no general fund dollars directly, but a state appropriation of one-point-five million. We are using some ARPA money, um, that was available, real-size excise tax revenues, a developer agreement for four million dollars, as well as park impact fees. So that's kind of the bucket that puts together about the twelve million. And after all of our scrubbing, it appears that our preliminary design and budget are very close. Construction costs aren't going up like they were when we started this process a year ago. So we'll be in design, um, probably at least half of next year, and then into construction, hopefully towards the end of next year, once all the bid documents get done. You can see the rendering on the top there, kind of, that would be looking at it from kind of the B Street Plaza, um, back across with the Postmark in the rear. So the next one, I think, shows the same thing, similar. Yeah, um, so we'll talk a little bit about the plaza and take questions at the end. I'm kind of rambling quickly here. I do that when I get excited about something. So the plaza area, the one-twenty-five building, that was bought, purchased entirely with a Conservation Futures Grant. So we received a grant for, um, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purchase of that property. And so it has to remain as green space. And, um, there would have been a small corridor between that building and our theater, but it would have been about as wide as maybe fifteen, twenty feet, thirty feet, it's pretty skinny. It wouldn't have been able to be a real gathering place. And so thanks to this grant, um, we're able now to create a real downtown plaza, that, um, park that goes through the whole, that whole section between B Street and the Postmark, and the original Postmark Alley, which was a project with UW-Livable Cities, probably six years ago now. This will be part of that dream coming to reality. Hopefully, some of those students who are now probably twenty-eight years old can come back and, and see what their original dream becomes. So the overview, now this would be the other side of it, looking, um, northwest. You're high above, what are we, high above here, Rattles? The Rattles Store, and you see Railhappen on the right, you see the B- And you see Railhop on the right, you see the B Street Plaza flowing through like a little river over to the postmark. Existing stage on the postmark where I can see a band playing while people sit in the plaza looking northward. Plenty of room for food trucks, for energy. You see the lighting that Matt spoke about through the whole thing. And before a show comes, I can, we envision hopefully some new retail downtown as well that'll fill up this space. And also perhaps evening markets in the summer could use this space. It'll be a big area that I think we can close off without even right-of-way permits because we can use the, it's, it's just going to be very pedestrian friendly between the B Street, the city space and the postmark, all around the arts. So I think it's a great design. And this is very preliminary, we haven't gone in defined tooth, but we wanted to roll something out. So you can kind of see what the vision is and take comments, concerns, compliments are good. And this is our, our main project for the downtown park. We don't have a full estimate on the construction cost of that yet, but we purchased it a week ago. We're doing schematic design on that right now. We'll do final design in the summer. And then construction, we're looking at rolling that construction in with the bid for the theater. The plan would be that they will probably stage their construction on that parcel while they build the theater. And then when they get towards the eighty percent construction on the theater and don't have to stage big equipment anymore, they'll build out the plaza so it could open seamlessly at the end of the project as well. So it's going to be a lot going on downtown, but sometimes a lot has to happen. Funding for this was from the state of Washington. We'll be using funds from the King County Prop Two Levy. There's some, a little bit of money left in the downtown development fees from some of the projects, like the Legacy Plaza. We'll move over there, park impact fees. And we received a grant from state, from Chris Stern's office for two hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand? I can't remember, for a large amount of money. So we'll be using some of the state money as well, two hundred and fifty thousand from that as well. So a lot of moving parts, but that's good. And so that's what we have to present today. And hopefully, we can maybe quarterly or something like that, just keep you in tune. We've got a website going on the project as well that we hadn't updated for quite a while. And the community keeps asking what's next. So I think now that we've reached this point tonight, we'll start pumping out community information. Questions?
Okay, thank you. What a great.
They had questions, no? I thought you were kicking us out.
No, I raised my. Okay, thank you for a great presentation. That was awesome. I'm excited for it too. You mentioned about food trucks. Where are they going to be placed?
Well, probably depends on the event, but the entire alleyway from Auburn AV cleared to behind Railhop and the city owned that whole right-of-way. So I would envision on that side, but I don't think there's really, we also, they indent the sidewalk on, you can see where the sidewalk goes in there in front of the plaza at the other side. So we haven't gotten into that level of design development yet.
Okay.
There's quite a bit of space there.
All right, I was, I was just, wanted to see where they were going to, I, I hope not on the grass though.
Well, no, and that's so preliminary. One of the things with conservation futures grants is eighty-five percent of the property has to remain green space. So you can't create like a big concrete plaza there. It's against the guidelines of when we receive the, the money. We are trying to balance that eighty-five percent out between the conservation's property and the one to the north, which is the leftover city property, to see if they'll let us balance that eighty-five percent over the whole thing to get a little more hardscape in the plaza than this is showing. But we haven't gotten to that level yet.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cheryl Reikes.
Obviously, you're not going to tell me for anything, but I do have a couple of questions. So what will the parking be like downtown? Will it be the same, parallel parking?
Yeah, we're trying to maintain, as best we can, trying to maintain as much downtown on-street parking as we have to begin with. We haven't finalized that number yet. There may be one or two spots that were, that we may have to sacrifice for this, but we're still trying to get that, that number. And we definitely, in our mind, we're definitely aware of the downtown, you know, we still want to maintain as much downtown on-street parking as possible. Parking for the theater itself is, there is, there is no current plan for parking for the theater itself. And basically, it's, it's, the, the idea here is that it's outside of the, it's after-hours events typically. And so the, the downtown parking is, is more open in the evenings for events such as this, so.
When we were seating like two twenty-five before versus two ninety in the, it really, parking, you know, people, one of the things they compliment us on, it's not like going to Seattle where you have to park four blocks away and pay thirty dollars. So I think between what we have across the street from City Hall, the new garage, people are just going to learn you have to walk a block or two. But our, our actual growth in parking from before is probably about, you know, fifth, fifty seats, so.
And remember, we have parking at the Safeway lot and the, the, lot at B Street, B Street lots there as well.
Estates as well.
They're all in the very, very close vicinity.
Councilwoman Tate?
Thank you. Not so much a question other than a comment here. I am so proud of the leadership that has really put forward arts here in this city. It is so needed, it is so asked for. You guys have worked so, so hard on making this happen. I'm just overjoyed personally, just because I know how important Postmark is to the city and hearing about it as a former arts commissioner, but now adding this to the mix, it's just, it's just going to brighten up our downtown. And I'm so, so proud of our leadership that has done this.
Councilwoman Cheryl Reikes.
Darrell, I have another question. Are you contemplating a lot of road closures on East Main while they're, while it's being built?
A lot of road closures?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten into that much detail. I mean, we're in the middle of design, so we don't exactly know where everything is going to go. But we, we also recognize, similar to the parking discussion, we recognize that we need to get people through, both, both pedestrians and vehicles through the area. So a lot of our construction projects, yes, there are times where we have to close roads and we have to provide detour routes. We also, we also allow for, you know, alternating one-way traffic. Where you have flaggers that during construction work, that they'll still allow for vehicle access through there. Don't know what it looks like yet. We haven't got to that detail yet. But as we all, any sort of construction that we have, we, we always take into account how we're going to get people through there and still be able to use the, the areas as much as we can while still making it safe, right? So there are inconveniences in construction, there's no doubt.
I'll take it back to what she has in then. I'll, well, you know what, I'll let councilwoman Bowen chime in.
Thank you, Chair. So my questions are pretty simple. One of which is, within the new theater building itself, does the design allow for potential vertical expansion? So that's one of the things that, you know, we talk about is if you can't go out or if you need to preserve the space next to it as green space in perpetuity, do we allow for building up in the future if we needed to do any sort of modular, you know, expansion?
We have no plans for that, no.
Okay.
I don't know if going up would change the size of your house, the two hundred and ninety seats, or two hundred and ninety-nine, up to two hundred and ninety-nine seats by going up. I guess you could maybe balcony, it hasn't been contemplated.
Yeah, I was thinking in that space, both of balcony and if you were ever interested in expanding it into additional event space as an opportunity within the city. If you're putting it right next to a pretty park next door, you know, you could have some type of, you know, weddings, receptions, events, any number of things that people might want to have in a downtown park. So was trying to forward things to what other opportunities could be there within that same space.
Yeah, and when, when you talk about planning for building, buildings up in the future, you, you have to build the foundation to support that. And there's quite a bit of cost that go into the foundation and not knowing what that cost would be, would be, you know, or what that ultimate plan would be, it makes it really challenging to design the foundation to, to meet that need. And then knowing that we only have a certain amount of money for this project, it makes it really, really challenging to, to spend that extra money on foundation for something that we don't know we would ever expand on, if that, if that's making sense?
Well, I think the point is if you don't put in a foundation that could support it, then you could not do that expansion, I think is the answer at the end of the day.
Do you have another follow-up question?
I do, if that's all right.
Yes, go ahead.
The other question I had is, within the green space, it'll be in the parks area, what types of programming use cases do you see fitting into the parks now?
I couldn't quite, programming use?
Yeah, so use cases, right? So we talked about there could be bands that play and people are watching the bands. There could be food trucks, there could be markets, there could be, you know, TBD. And so I'm looking at the images and for that park space, it's, it's new and it's exciting, but it will be somewhat limited. So I'm curious if there are kind of a shortlist of all of the anticipated use cases to make sure that we don't, you know, design ourselves out of anything in the future.
Yeah, that hasn't, we're still selecting the landscape architect that we're going to use on this. I have a couple in mind. So the actual details of like a play apparatus or something that involves kids or maybe how through nature play it integrates into the landscape versus just a, a structure like you see it. So it's going to be, I think primarily as a gathering place where there's enough things that keeps your children activated while you're waiting to go into a show or enjoy your downtown. So I don't envision it so much as a local park as I do as a, as a space where it just gets energized with people and activity. But those exact things are kind of wide open. You've seen everything now from, you know, tables that have chessboards on them to hopscotch in the sidewalks. And there's just a lot of ways to activate a space without making it look like a playground. And I think that's probably the direction we're leaning. And I think lighting is going to be super important, a little bit of height in it. You know, something that's maybe challenging to kids that goes up in the air and you integrate the arts into activity. So what it is, I don't know, but it's not a very big space. It's probably also about ten thousand feet, so the size of a gymnasium. But you can do a lot in space. But exactly what it is and how it flows, we'll come back with a couple iterations to park board into here as we kind of get that fine tuned. Because you want to do it right, because if, if it's just a lawn, it's just going to become either an off-leash dog park or a frisbee place. And we wanted something that activates people.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was exactly why I was asking about what programming you see going in there, you know? Are we going to have people, you know, rolling out yoga mats? Are we going to have people practicing roller skating? Are we going to have a few?
I think like a morning yoga class on the lawn or something like that that gets people out of their house and somewhere with a coffee is a great downtown recreation. So how we do that, we'll figure it out.
You know, get a bunch of easels and do some plein air activities. But yeah, just sort of thinking through those use cases so that from a design perspective, if you were having like outdoor markets and you know that standard tent sizes are ten by ten or, you know, twelve by twelve, you know, are there sufficient outlets? Is there sufficient, you know, bathroom spaces within adjoining facilities to accommodate whatever types of events that you would want to be able to host there? And so just trying to think through those programmatic use cases to make sure that our design's going to be a good, flexible fit for all of those potential opportunities. Because again, as we've heard other councilmembers say, it's very exciting. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Reikes.
I just have one more question. I thought I read in the packet, and I can't find it right now. It talked about a water feature in there. Is that still? No, I don't know where I saw that.
No. This one had a water feature, but I think it became the little fountain in front of City Hall. Yeah.
Well, okay then. But I will tell you, on Kate's thing too, the dance studio is very interested in having her students do little performances out there. So that'd be a good use of that space.
Yeah, I think the fact that we did the little stage behind the postmark and if we get it to the level of this diagram instead of the old asphalt, which we kept there because we knew it was going to go under construction. There was a plan for not spending money twice. I really think the plaza flowing north to south is as important as east to west. I think it's going to be a really fun space.
Yes.
I didn't see anything, but my brain, I couldn't imagine my, myself. We will have events there, maybe we bring like, have, create a new event so we can use it there. Maybe public market, international event. Then we have the sounder bring people to Seattle, not people going from Auburn to attend Seahawks. So I could see it in future, that's what I see. So thank you, guys.
I want to sit out there and watch a World Cup game on a big screen. And if Team Mexico is playing, we have a food truck there and marimba bands, so. I want to see it rolling, but I think I'm going to be one year late.
That's a good boxing, that's a big hit.
Five K bears.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions? You can go on to the next. Thank you. Great presentation. What are you guys doing the next one to?
Daniel Gauk, our Park Planning and Development Manager, is going to present on our master plan. I'll kick it off and get out of his way because he's been the wheelhouse behind this with SCJ Construction, or Consulting. And I know he met with you in September. And now we've got it all made it through Park Board and Planning Commission. So we'll let Daniel do his thing and I'll sit in the, the seats here and answer questions if needed.
Okay, Daniel, is yours to take over?
Good evening, councilmembers. Like you mentioned, Daniel Gauk, Park Planning and Development Manager. So this is the Parks Recreation and Open Space or PROS Plan. I believe it was in early September that I brought kind of an overview for council on what the PROS is and what it's looking at updating, those type of things. So the document, if you had a chance to go through it, was a, took a, a bit longer to get done than we originally expected, but in working with the park board, probably six, seven, eight meetings, I think we talked with, we had this on the agenda for Parks Board. So it's been through, you know, several, several reviews. We've got internal reviews on it. So hopefully, we've have a clean copy here, you know, once like the CFP is adopted to insert pages. You'll notice there's some like highlighted pages, it's just kind of placeholders in there. And so Parks Board, they reviewed this, their final review, you can add on the agenda bill there, but at their last Parks Plan and then for Park Board meeting, they recommended bringing it forward to Planning Commission. Then Planning Commission, they saw a partial document earlier this year and then they finally had a chance to review the entire document at their last Planning Commission meeting. And then they recommended to bring it forward for council review. So that's what I'm here tonight doing. So I have a pretty short PowerPoint presentation because it's hard to put everything in a hundred and twenty-eight pages onto, you know, fifteen-minute conversation. So happy to, you know, kind of go through this and then do questions, question and answers, hopefully. See if this works. So this is one element of the comprehensive plan that is currently being worked on. I believe it's coming to City Council for study sessions and adoption eventually in December. So then this, this PROS document would then be adopted as it was in 2015 as an appendix to the overall city comprehensive plan. It's not in PowerPoint, so sorry, it's a little wonky. So the PROS Plan itself, it includes, you know, like, So the PROS Plan itself, it includes, you know, like an inventory, you know, where the parks, you know, where the recreation should be moving towards and funding, like grant opportunities, those types of things. And we currently are to apply for some R C O, which is the State or Federal Grants Recreation and Conservation Office. We need to have an adopted plan to be able to apply for and get grants, you know, for park improvement projects, open space, those types of purchases. And then, so the public outreach, I believe I went over this in September. But we did a, you know, the numbers are kind of there, but are listed there. We had 619 survey responses, which, you know, I was in planning for a long time and getting 619 survey responses is a lot, especially in Auburn. And then we've made, just as the arts team or Kent's team was talking about earlier in the different languages, we also made the survey available in different languages. And we had it displayed for Q R codes at the parks. And we had it emailed out to all of our 34,000 subscribers that we have for our Parks and Recreation programs, that type of stuff. And then so the PROS Plan, like the, what it includes, I mentioned the inventory. So we went through with the Parks Maintenance Staff and other park staff and got input on all of the parks, you know, and to kind of see where those ranked on. There's a scale in the, in the plan there. In the table with a scale in there, in the plan. And basically that's not looking at saying, oh, we need a new bench at Mill Pond or something like that. It's overall, you know, what is the quality of the parks? Like Game Farm could use a new restroom, needs a new parking lot. And so just kind of looking at those, those bigger items. And then those are listed in the inventory there. And then also, you know, updating the inventories to show what's been added, like a new playground at Fulmer Park, wall fields, those type of things. And then it includes what's going to be anticipated to be needed for the, for future projects or capital projects. And those were based off of staff input and the online survey responses and the survey responses, or I guess, and, you know, input from the Park Board. And that was all kind of put together to get, you know, the list of what those capital projects might be. It looked at recreation trends over the past 10 years. I think we all know things have changed. There was a lot of requests for outdoor activities, like for instance, pickleball and dog parks. And then also looking at having the playgrounds be more inclusive, have them be, have the option for like nature-based learning, those types of things. And also multi-generational, so, you know, grandma can take her three-year-old and 10-year-old grandkids to the park and, you know, they have something to do. She has somewhere to sit, she can see both of them based on the playground design, those types of details. So that includes information to help guide staff when we're looking at upgrading playgrounds, for instance. The levels of service, L O S, so Parks has it just like traffic and water and sewer. So there's new guidance that's provided by the N R P A, which is National Recreation and Parks Association. And R C O, I mentioned the state there. And so those level of services there, it's, I might have it on the next slide here. So it's just, there are different numbers, they're more attainable and more in response to what the community needs are. So for instance, a community park, it's, the previous level of service was four and a half acres per thousand residents. And based on new guidelines, that's more like three and a half acres per thousand residents. So in general, or I guess if you go into line by line, we're a little bit deficient in the level of service. But overall, we're pretty close to what we should be, we should be providing. And so this will include, you know, guidelines on getting those numbers as close as we can. And then, so it's updating the goals and policies. And a lot of this was just kind of a culmination of all those other things I mentioned about the comment responses, survey responses, input from staff, kind of institutional knowledge. Daryl's been here a few years, so, you know, he's able to provide, you know, feedback or input on what he's been hearing, what he's heard over the years. And then there's a couple bullet parks there, or bullet points about, you know, what a lot of the comments were kind of lumped into these kind of sections. So, you know, obviously we want lower maintenance because fertilizer is expensive and it gets, keeps getting more expensive. So we want to make sure that in park design or in redesign developments, we're working with our maintenance staff to make sure that there's not a mow strip where they have to go twice, but they're only mowing one and a half width of it or something like that. But, and then the capital improvement program, so the C I P, I think you might have that on your agenda tonight as well. So these are, we have a, what we're expected to need to do or redevelop within the next six years, which is what we're required. And then we also have a kind of a longer term, you know, in 30 years, what are some cool ideas that we can do for new parks or be doing, adding turf to sunset, those kind of things. And then look at additional grant opportunities. Like Daryl mentioned, for the downtown park next to the theater, we applied for a King County Conservation Futures Grant. And we were able to secure that. And I, they, I think they are all kind of impressed with like that project because most of the time for those grants, they're for, you know, buying 50 acres to preserve a wetland, those kind of things. So, you know, just looking at different grant opportunities. A lot of them through R C O, they have 20-something different grants. And then King County also, that's where we get a lot of our, our grant money. And then impacts to capital improvement funds. So let's say we're anticipating to have 100 houses built that are paying park impact fees. And then if only 25 are built, then we're, we got to be able to look at different options for those. And then that has the list of projects, anticipated sources, funding sources. So it includes basically the background data for park impact fees. This was included in the fee schedule for last week, I believe. And so this just, our current fee is $3,500. And then the proposed, which is based on the dollar amount of those anticipated capital projects. And then calculating that with the projected growth rates, which were taken from the overall comprehensive plan work. And then, so we're kind of right in the middle there, the, the table on the right-hand side there. Those are what the current impact fees are for surrounding cities. And we, we were kind of right in the middle and we're a little bit higher right in the middle as well, based on, on these here. And I think that's about all I have for the PowerPoint. And I'm sure there's some questions, so.
Council, anybody have any questions? I guess we don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you turn the next one to?
So for the next item, I've got Sunita Gabriela, who is our Water Utility Engineer, is going to come up and talk to you about our lead service line inventory and the requirements around that and the notification that we're going to be required to do here in November.
Thank you for introducing her. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, tonight I'll be providing an update on Auburn's lead service line inventory. I'll cover three main points. Our recent submission to Washington State Department of Health, D O H, how we've made the data publicly accessible and our upcoming customer notification plan to keep customers informed about their water service lines and any necessary actions. Lead exposure risk, lead exposure and drinking water poses a serious health risk for young children and pregnant women. Even low lead levels are associated with developmental issues, behavioral change and reduced I Qs in children. An adult's exposure can cause high blood pressure, kidney damage and reproductive issues. Lead typically enters drinking water through corrosion of lead-containing service lines, pipes and also plumbing materials, which makes identifying and addressing these sources of lead critically important. So a little background, lead was prevalent in water service lines until 1996 when Congress amended the Safe Drinking Water Act to ban lead in plumbing. The act did set a legal framework to limit contaminants in drinking water, including lead. Compliance with this act is critical for all water systems, including Auburn. Since then, regulations have continued to evolve, requiring more stringent measures to reduce lead exposure and protect public health. Today, the requirement to conduct a lead service line inventory is just part of this larger effort to eliminate all lead contaminants in our water systems. Several federal and state regulations govern our work. The Environmental Protection Agency, E P A, established the lead and copper rule in 1991, marking a significant step toward addressing lead and copper contamination in water. The rule required water systems to monitor lead levels and take corrective actions if they exceed the E P S action level of 15 parts per billion. While this was a major step, this rule was limited in scope as it did not require a complete inventory of service lines, mainly focusing on monitoring at the top. In response to growing concerns, the E P A revised the lead and copper rule in 2021, adding a mandate for full inventory of service lines, both public and private. This revision, known as the Revised Lead and Copper Rule, require all water systems to classify lines as lead, non-lead, unknown or galvanized, requiring replacement. So Auburn has submitted the inventory results to D O H, which was due by October 16, 2024, so about two weeks ago. And also met the requirements to make the results publicly accessible by the same day. The results are available through the City of Auburn website. And customer notification is also required, which is triggered by three of the classifications, meaning lead, galvanized, requiring replacement, as well as unknown, which I'll expand on shortly. On October 7, 2024, that's about three weeks ago, the E P A signed the Lead and Copper Rule Improvements, or L C R I. While it hasn't yet been published in the Federal Register, we understand that it may bring more requirements. While we await the final details, Auburn is preparing to align with these anticipated changes through continuous inventory. Just a history about Auburn's approach to lead replacements. Auburn has been taking a proactive approach in addressing lead in our water system, replacing any lead contaminants identified during infrastructure upgrades over the years. Recent replacements targeted any fitting with potential lead content in the public lines. We also conduct regular lead sampling, testing consistently showing levels below the E P A action level of 15 parts per billion. These results are documented in our annual water quality reports. And they are accessible to the public through our city's website. Through these combined efforts, meaning testing, replacement, we have been seeking, taking steps to ensure that Auburn's water is safe and lead-free. To dive into the lead service line inventory, it's a comprehensive and has to include every service line that enters a building, regardless of its current or intended use. When ownership is split between the water system and the customer, which is mostly the case for City of Auburn water system, as you can see from the figure, we are also required to specify the material for both the public side and the private side. So just for clarification, the public service line is the segment which is city-owned and maintained. And it extends from the water main all the way to the meter and the tailpiece behind the meter, which is about 18 inches. And the private service line begins just behind the tailpiece and continues into the property. Each section of the service line, meaning both public and private, must be classified, as I said earlier, as non-lead, lead, unknown or galvanized, requiring replacement. Just a note that the galvanized requiring replacement is reserved for private service lines. And the reason for this is, this category is basically when you have a galvanized downstream of previously unknown or known lead service line. And the reason for this is lead particles can accumulate in galvanized pipes, even if the upstream lead source has been removed. For our inventory methods, we used some cutoff dates. For, for the public service line, 1973 was used based on available City of Auburn standard details from that period, which indicates that non-lead service lines were used in Auburn as early as that period. And the figure that you're seeing on the screen is an indication of that. For private service lines, 1988 was used. And this is to align with the federal lead ban that took effect in 1986. And we accounted for a two-year phase-off period. To ensure a comprehensive and accurate understanding of Auburn's water infrastructure, we employed a multi-method approach and to verify material information regarding our service lines. The first one is historical as-built records. These records were our primary reference for identifying the materials used in Auburn's water system construction. As-built plans are particularly valuable for identifying service lines installed prior to the cutoff dates that I just mentioned, helping us identify areas needing further investigation. I would also like to take this opportunity to highlight the contribution of our former intern, Kayden Loop. During his last two summer internship, he played a crucial role in reading and recording material details from as-built drawings, which was significant effort and a backbone of this inventory. And then the second one is inspection logs. Our Public Works Maintenance and Operation Team maintains these logs documenting outcomes from regular maintenance, as well as repair upgrades and routine checks. Following updates to our standard operating procedure, which was partially driven by the lead and copper rule revision, we now keep record details of materials that are encountered during any work on the water system. The third one is water sample test results. By conducting regular water quality tests in different areas of the city, we monitor for elevated lead levels. These results obviously help us identify potential problem areas and prioritize them for further investigation. Last but not least is the public engagement via customer survey. We actively sought customer input. In January 2024, a survey was sent out with the water bills, asking customers to share details of their service lines. The survey has been instrumental in bridging data gaps, and the information collected has been used to cross-reference with other sources to verify accuracy, meaning the other methods that are mentioned above. So to summarize our methods, the inventory process has integrated data from ASBILT records, inspection logs, sample test results, and customer surveys for private service lines. Given that private line materials were not consistently tracked historically, the customer survey included with the January 2024 bill helped us gather valuable information, which we got about 100 responses. The survey is still open for customers to report their findings.
What's the cutoff date on that for that survey?
The survey is basically, we sent it out to everyone, but really it is important for people who had their service lines installed before 1988, because we know that after 1988, we did not have lead, so we automatically ruled it out. And the survey actually asked when your house was built, so that way it tells you from the date that you enter whether it's lead or not lead, like on the spot. But if it was built before 1988, then it will ask you more questions to inspect your service line using.
So what is the cutoff date?
So if I can add, so we're not intending to close the survey. That'll continue to be one of our tools in order to get information from our customers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So our findings reveal that for private service lines, 6,992 are classified as non-lead, 8,087 as unknown, 7 as lead, and 92 as galvanized, requiring replacement. For the public lines, we have 12,323 as non-lead, 2,855 as unknown. We don't have any known lead or galvanized, requiring replacement on the public side. Okay. On October 16, we submitted our completed inventory to Washington Department of Health. As I said earlier, classifying each service line, one of the four categories. Simultaneously, we made the inventory results available for the public, initially through a searchable table on the city's website, which met the Revised Lead and Copper Rule requirements. This was a temporary form of communication, and as of October 22, it has been replaced with our chosen method of communication, which is an open GIS portal, which is now available for everyone on the city's website. The portal allows customers or the public to view their private and public service line status by address, each designated one of the four categories stated earlier. As for customer notification, the material designation for 8,248 service lines will trigger customer notification requirements. Within 30 days of the Washington Department of Health's submission, meaning by mid-November of this year, we must notify customers whose service lines are classified as lead, unknown, or galvanized, requiring replacement. This number is lower than the total unknown count mentioned earlier, combined for private and public service line due to overlapping classification in public and private lines. Please note that DOH requires that we treat unknown service lines as lead until proven otherwise. Each notification letter will provide details on the identified line material and offer guidance on recommended actions, including water testing and replacement options. This notification also fulfilled the Lead and Copper Rule requirement, revised requirements for customer education, ensuring that residents understand potential risks and next steps. We will also have to continue sending out customer notification every year or with change of ownership until reclassification to non-lead upon availability of new information from further investigation. Next step. So our immediate next step will be to send out notification to customers. Noted earlier, by November 15. These actions align Auburn with the requirements set by the Revised Lead and Copper Rule. To further reduce unknown classification, we're also exploring other inspection methods with the intent to reduce the number of unknowns. As new information becomes available through other methods or the survey, we will update our inventory to reflect the most accurate data. And I also want to note that on this customer notification that we'll be sending out, we will include link to the online GIS portal as well as the survey. To conclude, Auburn has submitted its lead service line inventory, and our GIS portal is now live for public access. The next major step is to notify affected customers by mid-November. We will continue to refine our inventory and comply with any future regulatory changes that will be brought under the Lead and Copper Rule improvements. Thank you, council members, for your attention if you have questions.
Counsel? Any questions? Councilwoman Baldwin.
Thank you, Chair. My question, and I think I already know the answer to this, but for this inventory, is this specific to water service provided by the City of Auburn? Or do we have any inclusion of the other regional providers that operate within Auburn?
The EPA mandate is for all Group A water systems to conduct this inventory and submit their information to their state. So all other water systems will be submitting their own inventory.
Okay, so if we had residents on the call with Lake Haven or one of the other providers, and they wanted to know what their own household status was, they should reach out to their respective provider?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much. It was a great presentation. I have to go back and look and see if I did that. Next, we've got. I know, so I'm sorry. Ordinance number, you know what? Can we take a five-minute break before we take you? Okay? Thank you.
I'm not going to say yes or no.
Yeah, I'd like to take a five-minute break. Okay, Counsel, we're going to start back, and we've got ordinance number 6947 with Director Thomas.
And this is Frank Downard, the city's financial planning manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and Counsel. I'm Jamie Thomas, Finance Director. And like I said, I brought Frank with us tonight. We're going to review the budget. If it's all right, I'm actually going to discuss all three ordinances that I have on the agenda tonight in one presentation. So that is 6948, which is the 2526 biennial budget, Ordinance 6947, which is the 2025 property tax levy, and 2025 through 2030 capital facilities plan, which is Ordinance 6956. And the reason I'm presenting them all together is because the second two ordinances actually all roll up into our 2025-2026 biennial budget. So they all touch each other, if you will. Before I get into kind of our budget calendar and where we're at now, I wanted to start off another budget meeting, just talking about roles again. The council, roles of the mayor, and then kind of what we've accomplished so far as far as where those roles align and where we still need to go. So just as a very brief, high-level overview, the council roles are to establish the goals and priorities for the city. You set tax rates and ultimately are responsible for adopting the budget. The mayor's responsibility is to lead the council in the process of establishing those priorities and goals. The mayor develops the budget based on those goals communicated by the council. And then ultimately, once that budget's adopted, it is the mayor's role to implement the budget. So work we've done so far, we've met. We've set strategic goals and priorities at the beginning of 2024. We've developed a proposed budget based on those goals and priorities. But the other thing that this proposed budget also includes is that it's also within available resources. So it's not just accomplishing all goals, all strategic goals, and all priorities all at once. It is prioritized based on the resources available. We held our three council workshops to go over the 2526 budget at the beginning of September, where each of the department directors came to the council talking about the roles of their departments and the services that they provide, and how those link to those strategic goals and priorities. And hopefully, we answered all of those detailed questions, at least through the month of September, as it relates to how the proposed budget meets those strategic goals and priorities. So where we're at today is to do one final high-level look at that budget to look at the six-year capital facilities plan, and then also look at the 2025 property tax levy. We've got some updated numbers. The county sends updated assessed valuation numbers every week to the city. So as we get closer to our November 30 filing deadline, we have a pretty good idea of what that exact number for our allowed levy is going to look like. So that's tonight. On November 4, we're going to hold our first two public hearings, one on the first public hearing on the biennial budget, and then also our required public hearing on the property tax levy. And then on November 18, we'll have our second public hearing on the biennial budget, and then hopefully adoption on those three related ordinances. So with that, I'm going to just jump right into the high-level discussion of our general fund budget and what you see in the preliminary budget book that was distributed last week? Last week, the beginning of last week. The preliminary budget begins on page 201 of your agenda. So, but it looks like most of you have your actual with you. If you're following along in your agenda, it is page 201 where that actual budget document begins. And these pie charts are really a summary of everything, a very high-level summary of everything that you see for the general fund in this preliminary budget. For 2025, we're proposing $109.1 million in expenditures and $114 million in general fund expenditures. For 2026, not 2024, this is an overall decrease from 2024. And the explanation for that is that in 2024, we had $10 million in the budget for ARPA expenditures. Though that $10 million decrease is offset by some new increases, some new requests that we'll talk about in a moment, as well as increased costs for salaries and benefits and increased costs for our internal service fund allocations. So you can see our internal service fund allocations in that first pie chart on the left makes up 13% of our overall general fund budget. And to just reorient, those internal service fund charges include our IT fund, our replacement and rental fund, our insurance funds, our multimedia funds, and our facility funds. And there's most of the costs associated with those internal service fund allocations are also salaries and benefits within those funds. So there's people within those funds providing those services. And then just pointing out, once again, that 56% of our overall general fund budget is for people. It's for the salaries and benefits of the people doing the work. Also to kind of jump backwards in your budget book a little bit, or jump forwards, on page two hundred and forty seven is a list of all of the FTEs. And so that is another responsibility of the council is to review the FTEs and approve the total number of FTEs that the city can hire. And for this year, we're not, we're only proposing one change in FTEs, and that is for the ten commissioned police officers. We'll talk about that in a moment. So the total number of FTEs that we are asking for is three hundred and eighty-five.
Is that the right page?
You give us, you give us imagination.
Is that the two hundred and forty, that's in your, the agenda packet though?
Oh. Oh, we were looking for.
Yeah, I, I was, I was, yeah, I don't have them. I was going based on the page number and in the agenda packet.
Good. I feel like, okay, we will go on that and fill up paper. That's fine.
I had it written down and then I switched over to, to the agenda packet.
You're fine, you're fine.
It's okay, we are fine. It's okay.
I was following you.
We'll follow with you.
Okay. Three hundred, three hundred and eighty-five FTEs in the general fund and a hundred and five in all other funds for a total of four hundred and ninety FTEs, full-time FTEs citywide. And that is, when you look at the pie chart on the right, where you see the budget broken down by department, where the bigger piece of the, pieces of the pie, the bigger pieces of the budget go to departments generally are also associated with departments with the most FTEs. So for comparison purposes, the mayor's, the mayor's division is two percent of the budget and she has three, she has three FTEs in that department. And then for comparison, the police department makes up thirty-seven percent of the budget and the proposed budget includes a hundred and fifty FTEs for that department. So to go into the details a little bit more, now this page two forty-one is the page, if you're actually looking in the budget book itself. If you're following along in the agenda, it's page four sixty-seven. But this is a summary of all of our new program requests. So this is above and beyond what our baseline budget for twenty twenty four was. We spent quite a bit of time going through all of these new, all of these new programs when we met in September. So I just wanna kind of call out a couple of the bigger programs. If I could, if there's any way I can help, roadmap, just let, let me, okay. So just as a summary, we have eighteen new requests in the general fund. At and in of those eighteen, one of those programs includes ten new commissioned officers for the police department. The numbers that you see here are divided both between the impacts to the general fund and then all other funds and their net of revenues and expenditures. So some programs might have some offsetting revenues and that will either redo, will may reduce the overall cost that you see in the general fund or the other funds column. So calling out some of the bigger ones, just to reorient, we have the Facility Master Plan debt service. So that is the thirty-nine million dollars in bonds that we'd like to issue for the facility improvements identified in the Facility Master Plan. The total cost for that would be one, the total debt service per year would be approximately two point two million dollars. One point two million of that being paid for by the general fund and a million dollars paid for by other funds. We are asking to add the photo enforcement expansion program and that expansion program would help fund those ten new commissioned officers that I had mentioned. In addition to an enhanced photo enforcement program, we wanted to increase our existing school zone speed camera program that would generate about seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars a year additionally in photo enforcement revenues. And we would use that for pedestrian and road safety programs in our transportation capital fund. We also are asking for an unaffiliated compensation study for our unaffiliated staff. As you may recall, our HR director had presented that it has been many, many years, years past due where we've actually looked at our unaffiliated positions and have aligned them with our, our comps outside of the city. And so we are asking for that. And then there's a couple of programs, I'm gonna just list them off that I would consider, put them more into the mandatory column. So even though they're on this list for council's consideration, they're really more mandatory in nature to continue operations. So we have the SCORE operating costs, the ValleyCom operating costs, the King County District Service, the King County District Court service costs, and then our WCIA insurance premium costs. Those are all increasing in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six in order to participate and be a part of those programs, which, when it comes to SCORE and ValleyCom and King County District Court, we are legally obligated to pay those costs. So as their costs increase, our relative portion also increases. I'm going to pause there because I think that this is kind of the meat of the overall general fund. It's budget is. I didn't know if I could get back for any questions to the council.
Council, any questions?
Okay.
Does Kate have any?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Baldwin?
Thanks. So one of my questions, Director Thomas, was on the unaffiliated survey. So we had, I had given feedback on that during the September meetings, that I was interested in knowing what the cost would be if we were exploring having that run by outside vendors, as opposed to doing that as an in-house survey, with the goal really of making sure that we've got impartial, objective third parties to run that, since, as you said, it has been many years past due. Were you able to track down what that would look like if we were to make that change?
So I'll, I'll provide a high-level answer to that and I'll let Director Martinson jump in if she wants to add to it. But yes, we, we took some of the feedback. We actually discussed it kind of as a director group. We've discussed with the mayor and our, our Director of Human Resources has reached out to some vendors to kind of get an idea of what the scope of services were, what kind of services they provide. And if we do, if this is something that we have budget approval for, that would probably be the route we would go to get that impartial, objective analysis on, on a compensation study. As far as cost goes, I mean, we, we haven't gotten that far down the road. We would expect, the numbers that we have currently in the budget are placeholders to begin with. We really don't have an idea of what the actual salary increases may be. So I think at this point, we are just planning what we have in the proposed budget will absorb the costs of both consultants that would perform the service as well as the actual salaries themselves. And if we need to find more money in the future, as we're moving through the process, we would, we would try to find that within our existing budget. That, that's the plan. Director Martinson, did you want, have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just to reiterate that I did reach out to several comparable HR professionals in the public sector that have done recent compensation studies. So we had five referrals and I've contacted four out of the five just to ask kind of a ballpark figure of how long a project like this would take, vetting their credentials and then figuring out rough estimate of a budget. So I think we're hopeful that council will approve the concept of a unaffiliated wage study as it's long overdue. And then we will work with Director Thomas and Mayor Backus to determine that if our current budget ask has the amount of money that would cover that, plus the wage increases. And if not, then we would just come forward in a future budget amendment to reconcile any increases in the cost.
Right. Awesome. Thank you so much. Mayor Backus?
Thank you. I just want to point out, though, that the reason for going with an outside vendor had no, there was no impact on the concern over being an unbiased study. We felt very secure and comfortable in the fact that our current HR director and assistant director could most definitely provide an unbiased study. But with workloads, we chose to go outside.
Does that answer your question?
Could I provide an additional comment as well? Thank you, Mayor Backus, for that comment. There was a discussion after the council meeting that the HR department could benefit from some help because I think we're looking at a hundred and eighty-two classifications and two hundred and thirty incumbents in those. So, you know, I, I think that we were concerned a little bit about horror stories that we have heard from other organizations that have contracted out this work. However, after vetting four of the five candidates, we feel very confidently that we've selected a consultant that not only has the expertise, but will be able to do this in a way that is a positive experience for these employees and these department directors throughout the process, based on their references.
Great. Thank you for the update. Any further questions? Yes, Councilwoman, right? I mean Baldwin.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that is very much part of it is, I had also had concern about workload for HR as it stands because we also have to make sure that we're able to get through the hiring for those additional PD headcount, which I know can always be a challenge. And then sometimes I think being able to go with vendors who have already had practical experience running these types of projects, they may have approaches or efficiencies that, you know, that can bear a quicker outcome, which I think would be everyone's goal. So glad to hear and thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. And so I'll continue. So switching from the general fund expenditures, I'll, I'll run right into our general fund major revenue. And that is, you can see the representation in the pie chart, there's three really major sources there that make up about seventy-five percent of the general fund's funding. And the first is property tax, which we'll talk about that ordinance in a moment. We're limited to a one percent increase each year over the prior year levy, which this year totals about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. We also are eligible to receive amount on new construction, which is totals about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year this year. And then something that changes a little bit from the original preliminary budget that we discussed back in September is the, the property tax that we would receive in the newly annexed area of the bridges. So we had not, we didn't have any assessed value information on the bridges, official assessed valuation information on the bridges from the county at the time we presented in September. We have now received that money and we expect to collect about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from that newly annexed area. So we get a little bit of a bump this year, a one, a little bit of a bump to increase our base for that annexed area. Sales tax, we are assuming a recession in twenty twenty five. So for a budget standpoint, we budgeted revenues for sales tax to be equal to what we're projecting twenty twenty four to end up being with a modest recovery, a modest one percent recovery in twenty twenty six. Utilities for both our internal utilities and our external utilities, we are budgeting for an increase in each of those. Our internal utilities, we know that we have rates that are increasing. We have scheduled rate increases each year. So as that tax base increases, we do expect tax, the taxes to increase in the general fund. And the same goes for those external utilities as well. And then BNO tax, similarly to our sales tax, we are expecting any recessionary pressures would keep our BNO tax collections equal to what we're experiencing so far in twenty twenty four. So I'm gonna jump into property tax a little bit more. I already said this, we are, we're limited to our one percent growth or the implicit price deflator. So in an event where inflation is less than one percent, we are able to take at least one percent if council passes a separate ordinance that allows us to take one percent when inflation is less than that. That's not, we're not facing that this year. And then we also are able to collect on the new construction, and I will talk about new construction in a moment. So here's our favorite visual of the dollar bill, and for every dollar you pay in property tax, an Auburn property tax owner, only twelve cents of that dollar actually comes back to the city of Auburn to just highlight the state, the school district and the county and all other agencies take up the other eighty-eight percent of that dollar, or eighty-eight cents that you pay on that dollar. So to talk about our ordinance sixty nine forty seven, which is our property tax levy for twenty twenty five, I'm gonna walk you through the calculation and how we actually come up with what we expect to collect in twenty twenty five for property tax. We do have to have this ordinance adopted by November thirtieth and submitted to the county by November thirtieth if we want them to collect any money for us in twenty twenty five. So assessed valuation is assessed valuation increases and greater than the one percent growth, the actual rate for property tax decreases. And what we've seen so far in for twenty twenty five valuations, the assessed valuation has increased five point seven five percent in the city of Auburn. Our assessed valuation is at eighteen point nine billion dollars projected for twenty twenty five, plus ninety-six point nine million dollars in new construction that took place in twenty twenty four. We get to add that one percent over twenty twenty four to our property tax and then we have our annexation. So if you walk through the chart that I have there, that tell, that walks us through to how we get to what we're gonna ask the county for our twenty twenty five property tax levy. Our twenty twenty four levy was twenty four, just a little under twenty-four point eight million dollars. We add one percent, which is two hundred and forty-seven thousand. We add our newly annexed areas, the bridges, that's three hundred and sixty-four thousand. So that means the amount that we're going to levy in twenty twenty five will be twenty-five point four million dollars. So that's for twenty twenty five property tax. But there's more. There's the amount that we didn't collect in twenty twenty four that we still get to collect. And there is right now forty-one thousand dollars in estimated refunds that work out to our, to our benefit that the county has calculated, so related to twenty twenty four and prior. So we're gonna collect that in twenty twenty five. And then the new construction piece. So anything, any new construction that took place in twenty twenty four hasn't entered the tax rolls yet because it wasn't on the tax rolls as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty three, we didn't get to collect it. So we add that to the tax rolls to twenty twenty five. It's taxed at the twenty twenty four rate. So even though we're collecting it in twenty twenty five, it's a, it's considered twenty twenty four tax. So our total collection for twenty twenty five is estimated to be twenty-five million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And that number will likely fluctuate just a little teeny tiny bit over the next couple of weeks as the county fine-tunes their assessed valuation, their estimated refunds and other, other adjustments on the county's end. So the levy rate is actually decreasing because our assessed valuation increased at five point seven five percent, which is a faster rate than our one percent additional that we can change. So tax rate's decreasing even though the overall tax bill itself is increasing. It's how the math maps out. So moving into our next ordinance, our capital facilities plan, which is ordinance sixty nine fifty six. This is on page two hundred and sixty-seven of the preliminary budget. So this, just to, this is what you're looking at, the actual physical budget book. That page two sixty-seven is the physical budget book, not the agenda pages. And we're asking for seventy-seven million dollars in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium in that capital facilities plan. There is an additional hundred and seventy-seven million dollars that we have programmed out in the out years in twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty. And this chart shows you how those capital projects break down between transportation, parks and rec, parks and recreation, general municipal and community improvements, water, sewer, storm, and then some other non, non, or other non-governmental, so that would be cemetery and airport. This is what those numbers look like in a graph. So we're pretty evenly split with our capital, our capital projects being spent between non-governmental projects, governmental projects, and then transportation. Transportation falls into the governmental arena, but it's such a large portion of our overall governmental capital projects. It deserved its own slice of the pie. The non-governmental, non-governmental is twenty-five point two million dollars over the biennium and that includes water, sewer, storm, airport and cemetery projects. Transportation projects include twenty-four point nine million dollars over the biennium and that includes capacity, non-capacity and preservation projects. And then the general capital improvements is twenty-six point nine million dollars over the biennium. That includes park development projects, some debt service, the theater and the downtown plaza and alleyway, and then the Facility Master Plan. the theater and the downtown, downtown plaza and alleyway, and then the facility master plan. How do we plan to fund all of those projects over the next two years? That is this next slide. So it's a very colorful chart. We have lots of different funding sources that we rely on to pay for all of those projects. This, as a caveat, this slide is just looking at the governmental capital piece. This is not our water sewer and storm projects. This is just how we fund those governmental capital projects. We've got our point one percent sales tax levy that is used, that we levied for the transportation benefit district that was new in 2023 and 2024. We are budgeting four point three million dollars over the biennium and that's, and that's sales tax money. We have two, two and a half percent city utility tax plus one percent a utility tax on all other utilities. And we are program, programming three and a half and three point three million dollars respectively over the biennium. We have our impact fees, our mitigation fees. That's both our traffic impact mitigation and our parks impact. That we're programming eight point three million dollars over the biennium and that has to be used really on expansion projects. We have two million dollars in REIT funding programmed over the biennium. We do use a piece of that for some of our debt service on the annexed building. And then new funding sources that are a part of this preliminary budget includes that photo enforcement program that I talked about a few slides ago, that over the biennium will be programming one point four million dollars for, for street safety programs. And then the bond proceeds. So the bond proceeds makes up a very large chunk over the next two years. That's a thirty-nine million dollar bond that we plan to spend over five years. And it would be dedicated to facility improvements in the city. So wrapping back to the general fund and the budget overview and the impact on the general fund, just to reiterate that on average, we expect to see expenditures increase five percent over the biennium. Most of that being in the salary, most of that's being driven by salaries and benefits that make up fifty-six percent of the general fund. Our average revenue is expected to increase one percent over the biennium compared to 2024. I've listed out all of the increases, property tax, utility tax, BNO tax and sales tax, and the, the relative amounts that we expect to receive. And then in the end, we're budgeting to have our general fund end at twenty-six million dollars at the end of 2026, which meets our minimum, our bare minimum policy for our general fund reserves. So we've, we accomplished that goal of meeting our, our fund balance policy requirements. In the chart, I forgot highlighted really the changes that we're, what we're proposing in 25, 26 over our current 2023, 2024 budget. So everything, the baseline is all of the same with the exception of the green highlighted new revenue and then the blue new expenditures, which we called out on that separate, the separate table with all those new programs. And, oh, next steps. So this is just to reorient ourselves again, assuming we're able to answer all of the questions here for council tonight. We will move forward with our public hearings on November fourth.
Okay. Council, any questions? I just have one. Where are we? The cameras, the force, where did I see that? Our photo enforcement program. How many cameras are we going to be putting up?
I'm, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head. Dr. Gao, do you have those, those numbers?
Yeah, so for the expansion program to expand into doing general speed enforcement, we looked at doing up to a total of three cameras for that.
Okay, do we have locations?
We do not. That in 2025, we will need to study that and do the process necessary to meet the requirements of the legislation to pick the locations where those would go.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Baldwin.
Thank you. So within the proposed budget, one of the other things that we had talked about in previous sessions was the REIT class line item for the city administrator role. And so some of the outstanding questions that I had had around that had hoped we'd be able to, you know, have some time allocated specifically within a study session. And so the questions related to that would be if this is approved, what timeline would we see for that city administrator position to be open? Do we have a example or proposed job rec or description that would go with that position? What the salary range would be? I'm curious with that being a change for the management schema, how do we see that affecting interactions? What would the interactions look like for council, for the mayor in that role, for directors in that role and for staff in that role and for community members in that role? So I'd like to see that kind of provided as how we would see that person fitting in within the operations of the city. I'd like to cover how we would propose hiring that individual as well as what would firing look like or entail? With that position, would that be changing with different mayors into the future? Or would that be essentially instating somebody in, you know, effectively, you know, a, you know, position above a director to which our community doesn't have a legislative action to replace that individual? So if there was changeover in that role, how would that come through? And then I think those were the questions, at least the big ones that I was hoping that we could cover with that position. Again, I like the idea and the concept. I just think we owe it to sort of everyone involved to make sure that we've got the organizational change management understood, associated with that position.
So I'll try to answer the questions that we have answers for at this point. We don't have a job description at this point. Generally speaking, the reporting structure would be, would mirror that of all other cities. The job description would also mirror that of all other cities that have a city administrator. So it would, it would essentially be a position. So that also answers the question about the hiring and firing. It is a position that would be reporting directly to the mayor, just as the directors currently report to the mayor. I know that HR has been doing some work on just kind of getting an idea for what our comps out, our comps in the market are as far as salary goes. So there's a lot of different ways depending on which comps that we're actually comparing to. So I think there's some still decisions to be made about what makes the most sense from a comp standpoint. There isn't a whole lot of variation. So I think we're getting a, a pretty good idea for, for what that would cost. And it would be well within the amount that the, the additional fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for in the budget. So there's no, no surprises there. As far as the timing of this, a lot of it has to do with how long it takes us to get a good solid job, job description put together. When the, when the position becomes available for the REIT class to take place, how long it takes for a competitive search to take place to find a highly qualified individual that fills this position. And I think from, I think I answered all of, as far as the access to getting information though from city government, I think if you're, if we're talking about constituents, nothing about this role would limit a citizen's ability to get information and transparency from the city. If anything, it would just increase that. It would just provide an additional administrator level position within the city that would be able to connect and provide information as, as the public needs that information. I think, I, I tried to get all of your questions. I don't know if I missed one there or not.
I would maybe ask for clarity with regard to, you said that with that it would be a position that reports directly to the mayor. So if the mayor or a future mayor decides that they don't want to have this role, are they able to terminate the individual without, you know, I guess without cause? Are they serving at the pleasure of the mayor?
I'm, I'm going to pass that off to Director Martensen.
Thank you, Director Thomas. So all of our directors are at-will employees with the exception of the city attorney. To remove the city attorney, there is code language about a action of council in that regard. And there's also language about appointment of city attorney in that regard. That's unique to that position. So typically in organizations like ours where, you know, there could be leadership changeover and that may be a job security concern of a top candidate, we typically give a contract to them that guarantees severance as long as they're willing and able to perform the duties and there's no, you know, illegal or immoral activity that would render that contract unable to be paid as severance if there was termination for significant misconduct. So we have template language for those types of contracts. And so the city administrator would fall into those just as the department directors do. So they would have some sort of financial job security if there were some reason that a newly elected mayor came in and did not want that individual as their city administrator. And I think that's fairly common across all cities that have a city administrator that we've seen in our research. So I hope I answered all of the questions that were posed.
But I think that's
Just a minute. I thought I saw another hand up. Councilwoman Amor.
Thank you. As a fresh graduate from AWC, they mentioned it in one of the classes. It looked like this is the norm in all city to have administrative work under the mayor and the mayor work. That's the structure. So that's, I'll find you the class, Kate. And after more research, I find it for more stability. I don't, it usually for the new mayor, by, I met new mayors, they usually, they like to work with the person because this person who has the knowledge will transfer it and keep the stability for the goal, what the council has. I don't, that's my thought. But I'll find you the class in AWC. I forget they have all the lists, but they mentioned it there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Baldwin.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember Amor, and I appreciate the answers from our directors. Like I said, overall, I like the idea of having a city administrator to that very point that was mentioned, which is it can provide continuity and stability within the organization. My biggest concern is making sure that we are upfront with the public, that they are aware of the shift, that our staff are aware of the shift and that everyone is doing the appropriate readiness and planning for that change, including our current, current directors and mayor. Is that maybe a shift as well having a new person as, you know, as a go-to or point person between those interactions as they happen today? So again, I'm not necessarily against it. I just want to make sure that we have answered as many questions as we can, including those that are maybe answered in AWC classes. But I don't know as that our public is necessarily attending those. So if we can ask them and get it out here on the record, that's part of the reason I look for these conversations to happen in session. So thank you. I think you guys covered most of it.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? That's it. Thank you for your great presentation as always. Thank you. Next, ordinance number six-nine-five-seven, Director Crum. Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Acting Deputy Mayor, City Council Members, Mayor, thank you for your time tonight. I am Jason Crum, for the record, Director of Community Development. Pleased as punch to be joined by Alexandria Teed tonight, Planning Services Manager for the city and community development. So we are here tonight to share with City Council some proposed code changes that have come as recommended from the Planning Commission. Planning Commission deliberated, discussed these changes and held a public meeting on October eighth. These changes are a result of some state legislation, specifically Senate Bill fifty-two ninety, which, see, we're losing the audience here. Alexandria and I
Sorry.
Presented to City Council about the Senate Bill back in July. So we will just briefly go through this, but remind City Council some of the elements of that legislation.
All right. So as Jason mentioned, Senate Bill fifty-two ninety was passed in 2023. The key provisions of it do become effective next year. So we've been going through the planning process. It does amend RCW thirty-six seventy-B, local project review. That RCW describes the process for processing project permits. Again, those are land use approvals, building permits, things of that nature. Our, locally, our process, our, of that RCW is adopted or codified in Title fourteen, project review. That also, also that RCW, it prescribes the process that must be completed with a land use project permit.
So that legislation affects the amount of time jurisdictions have to make a decision, which we'll touch on briefly. It also introduces some new penalties for jurisdictions who are not meeting those timelines, which include permit fee refunds and then some mandatory project review measures that may come into play for some jurisdictions. There's also some updated requirements for tracking and reporting to the Department of Commerce as well as some obligations for the city to publish those on our website. And there's some elements that are attempting to streamline the review process for site plan review.
All right, so let's step back and discuss the types of project permits. I've mentioned this, I believe, at previous city council study sessions, but I think it's, it's, it's helpful to go over the types of permits again because we'll be touching on this a little bit later. But type one, those are purely administrative. They're not subject to CIPA, State Environmental Policy Act review, environmental review. Type two, type two are typically type one permits that are subject to the CIPA environmental review. For example, you have a building permit typically just administrative, but under current CIPA WAC, for example, a building over twelve thousand square feet would trigger CIPA. So now it's, it's a type two permit. And then type three, those are the quasi judicial decisions made by the hearing examiner. And those always generally require CIPA, always require public hearing and typically always require CIPA.
All right, so for those types, so in the current regulations, regardless of the type of application, it was a hundred and twenty days. So jurisdictions had a hundred and twenty days to issue a decision. Starting January first, those type one permits, jurisdictions only have sixty-five days. So about a forty-five percent reduction. Type two goes from a hundred and twenty to a hundred, about a seventeen percent reduction. And then type threes actually were increased up to a hundred and seventy days, forty percent increase.
Okay, so the new Senate Bill also encourages a number of measures that we can implement in our code. They specifically identified ten measures. We're going to go over these measures in detail in the next couple of slides. But essentially jurisdictions not meeting timelines more than fifty percent, these additional project review options will become mandatory. They won't become options anymore.
And so as Alexandria mentioned, there's ten identified by the state. For those that adopt three of those now, they do not have to be subject to the permit fee refunds. So as part of the proposed code changes, there are some recommended provisions proposed in the code. And those are those three here. So the first one is to modify our codes such that pre-application conferences are only optional, but not required. Currently, there are, most, most of the time, pre-app conferences are optional in our code. There are just a few cases where previously they were mandatory. So there's some recommended changes there. And then the second thing, second And then the second thing, second item, is to allow housing types outright in all zones where those housing types are permitted. So essentially, that's saying if you allow a certain housing type in a zone, just allow it outright without a conditional use permit or an administrative use permit. And as part of the efforts to update the comprehensive plan and meet the requirements of Mill Housing Bill and ADU legislation, our code is proposed to kind of already get there. And then finally, we are proposing a post-review meeting process for our applicants. So currently, we do allow that upon request. We always have. But now we'll kind of make it a formal offer for all of our projects.
Okay. Now we'll walk through some of the changes that were made in our code in response of Senate Bill 5290. A lot of them, you're going to see, it's really, a lot of them are minor changes, changes to punctuation, grammar. We have some major changes, like we updated definitions, various definitions, various language that's to be consistent with the new Senate Bill. We updated to reflect our current permit types or permitting process. For example, we mentioned 120 days is what the standard process used to be. Now, based on the type of permit, you have a certain number of days. And then, again, for the pre-application meeting conferences, making every land use permit now optional instead of mandatory.
Also, I should say too, those code changes start in the packet on page 611 of the packet. But so also in those proposed code changes, the additional project review measures that I mentioned previously, they're all sprinkled in there. There's some proposed language for clarifying that when the hearing examiner is making a decision, that that is excluded from the time period. We had heard from other jurisdictions that sometimes the hearing examiner may take longer than the city anticipates to make a decision. So we want to make sure that we're not penalized in the event that that happens. Our hearing examiner is great, but may not always, you know, be our hearing examiner. So kind of planning for potential future. And then there's some proposed clarification on grading permits and the FAC process for civil, civil design associated with development that, which timelines those apply to. So our FAC process, the city has an interest in making sure that that design meets our standards because the city inherits those facilities as an ongoing maintenance responsibility. So we want to make sure that the maximum amount of time is provided for those types of applications. And then there's some relocated texts regarding weekends and holidays.
And then additional changes to Title 17, our land division code, and Title 18 zoning code. It was revised again to reflect that pre-application meeting process is optional.
And that is all we have tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Does Kate have any?
No. I don't see your hand up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Short and quick.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, council, there's nothing left on our agenda. So I will call the meeting.